Good evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you for coming. Welcome to the Town of Beekman Planning Board meeting this evening. If you'll notice, the exits are behind you on your left and in the rear of the building, and there's another exit right here behind us. And if you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first item on the agenda is a public hearing that has been going on for quite some time. My apologies for this. The applicant is waiting on information from the Department of Health?
Environmental Conservation.
Environmental Conservation. So we're going to adjourn, this has already been adjourned, last meeting, and is going to be adjourned again to next month.
I'll make a motion to return the public hearing to next month.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
For the record, that's July 18th, 2024, meeting.
Okay, all right. Mr. Reichman. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, please. Yeah. All right. So this evening, our attorney is in present, and I have some notes to read, and I'll just read them to the board at this time. So Mr. Reichman is on adoption for conditional site plan and special use this evening. Dan, would you like to comment, or is there something you'd like to discuss at this point?
What's there a special use for?
Is that incorrect?
It's a resolution of subdivision plat lot line realignment approval, so there is no special use permit.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That was just, I think the attorney just put that on there by accident.
Oh, he, okay, that was an error on his document.
Right. He said site plan on it, it's a subdivision, technically, it's a lot line realignment, which in our town code is defined as a subdivision, so they have to do the subdivision process for lot lines realignment, so that's what he's here for, and that's what the draft resolution that I presented to you includes.
Has the board had a chance to review the draft resolution?
I did, yes.
Any questions or comments regarding it?
So this isn't for preliminary approval, this is for final approval?
Dan, can you speak to that?
I missed a question, I'm sorry.
This is for final approval?
Yeah, it would be for preliminary and conditional final approval.
And conditional final.
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution of the subdivision for preliminary, and what was the other?
Conditional final.
And conditional final approval.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from any of the board members?
Just a quick reminder of what the conditions are?
Sure, on the bottom of page three going into page four, we have six conditions that are part of the conditions of the final approval. In essence, it's satisfying all the information that was in my May 16th, 2024 review letter. The second one is deeds that are subject to review by the town attorney, with TP 584 as an RP 5217 forms, those are legal forms for the filing of the deeds and the real property transfer. Number three was formally closing a demolition permit, which is now open, for the accessory apartment that was there, that would be proof of abandonment of the accessory apartment that's on the site. Number four is payment of any outstanding application escrow fees to the planning board. Number five is providing final signed sealed plans and MyLars, and number six is a signature of this resolution by the applicant, which indicates his familiarity with the provisions of the resolution, acknowledging receipt of a copy of the resolution.
Thanks, Dan.
Sure.
Those are pretty much the standard.
Pretty standard, yeah. The demolition one's a little bit different, but there's an existing accessory apartment on here that wasn't legitimized or legal, and so now that's going away as part of this application.
I don't have any other discussion.
So I already...
We already made the motion.
They had a motion, I believe, right?
Yep, and he seconded it, now we've got to vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, no extensions, no negatives. Very good. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
We'll make sure you get a copy of the signed resolution within a few days, and then you're on the clock at that point, so, all right? If you need any help with that, let me know.
Have a good night, sir.
Take care.
And next on the agenda is DCC Contracting Corporation subdivision and site plan and special use Bishoff Lane and Route 55.
Thanks for rendering, yes.
I'll tell you, I...
You asked, and you...
I have.
That's all we gotta do?
That's never worked before, Brian. We're just really happy.
Usually, the third time I get it, right?
Well, I didn't mean with you. I didn't mean to imply that with you.
Yeah, so at the last planning board meeting, we were getting closer to pushing this toward advertising for a public hearing, we listened to what the board said, so I think the renderings is what we were probably seeing, I mean, updated the architectural style, maybe a more modern flair of what's going around right now versus what we submitted a couple of years ago. What we wanted were the natural earth tones, put some work aside, some stone, stone, cap stones above the windows, some metal, but just try to pop the style, it is a pretty long building, so put some material leaf to try to show that it's not just a big square.
Looks nice.
Yeah, I think they accomplished that with this rendering, so this is the concept we were thinking of, and probably one of the changes that we did listen to was landscape planning. We went ahead and hired a landscape architect, kind of goes through the second plan, we took the town code, maybe species, and tried to apply that best with this plan, in this preliminary stage. Probably made a pretty good guess, we haven't gone through the applicable process, we didn't give a little agency, but I think, you know, what we submitted was a pretty healthy plan, and I think it complements the architectural style that we're putting on the board tonight. I think in that landscape plan, we also could post some pictures and things like that, so hopefully that we see the digital submissions, we have the color behind it. Yeah, it'd be fun, I'm pretty far with this one. Specifically, DOT, Ilyas is our contracting area, they work with, make take DOT. Conceptually, they like what they see, and right now, we're just fine tuning the model that Ilyas was working on, there's some updated syncro programs that the DOT has for the length of Beek Road that they want us to incorporate, this is newer information, so we're going to incorporate that into their analysis. The result is not going to change, I think it's just updating the model with newer information that's available. In doing so, obviously, looking for, see if they can set a little approval from DOTs, obviously, advance this project from C E. With those changes, those additions, I think we've come pretty far, the stormwater report, you know, from a conceptual standpoint, I think we're pretty good, it's just, you know, as we kind of find two minutes ago, the agency involvement, you know, elaborate details of the current elevations, getting into specific details. But from a conceptual standpoint, based upon what we're proposing, from a previous standpoint, especially in stormwater facilities, you know, the plan, I think that works, so we'll obviously work with the town to add some more information to that as well. I believe the applicant's attorney is also the department's town attorney, specific to access for the existing areas on Bishoff Lane, that's my understanding that there's a back four, I'm having it very difficult, well, from legal and from title. I'm just trying to think what else we've covered, I think those were major couple items. There's things we need to have, like lab documentation to be written out for all the lays on, lab just patients to be sure that no access has been necessary, there's things like that, that's just the most stuff that we need to set up. I think from an overall conceptual standpoint, I think we're hitting everything that the town center codes spoke to, and hopefully, we're at the point now where we can start to incorporate some public comment into the design, just to make sure that their voices are being addressed on the point of that.
What I'll do is, I'll just read Craig's notes regarding this project, there was some confusion from the last meeting about Bishoff Lane and how it crossed over onto the back right-hand corner of the project, Joe's property there, and it didn't come across clear as to how to move forward, I think, last meeting legally. So what was said here by Craig, the legal documents were submitted, if the applicant progresses to the public hearing stage, we can vote to adjourn for that purpose. Does that make sense? Okay. So that...
Where is that saying?
Right here. They vote to adjourn for that purpose? So either way, what he's saying is that that issue is being resolved with the town attorneys and his attorneys, and has no bearing on our decision tonight, for the most part.
Yeah, I think, to summarize it, they did a few different things here, so they've provided an abstract of title, which had to do with the rights of the residents, they obtained access from Bishoff Lane, which is a private road, and then, you know, what this proposal does is it prepares a town road with a connection through an easement to that, to continue access to all those folks that rely on that as access to their homes. So that was captured in a legal document that was actually forwarded to me today, obviously, I'm not reviewing it, but it's, Craig was apparently satisfied with a lot of that, and saw a lot of good progress there, so on the legal side, they've made really good strides on that, because that was a big question, of course, you know, I was, do we have the rights to even remove portions of this road despite the fact that we would be providing a public access way that would still provide them with access? So I think Craig was basically just saying he was pretty satisfied with that, you know, on his side is ready to move forward. I have a few things in my letter, I'll just touch on a couple of them real quick for you, Brian. With regard to the environmental assessment form, we should really update that based on everything that's changed, particularly since there's been, you know, some pretty large-scale development changes to the overall plan. And then also, I'd mention that when we did the lead agency circulation, the Water Wastewater Authority had some requested changes to the EIF and that as well, so just kind of incorporate that as well as part of your updating of that. I spoke about overall grading and utility designs, you know, I think the majority of the information's on there, it'd be easier for review and for construction purposes if we kind of dedicated some sheets to grading, dedicated some sheets to utilities, dedicated them to erosion sediment control, and I think that would be very helpful for the board to be able to help understand what's all proposed as well. One question, I suppose, right now, the plat shows three lots, it shows one lot with a building and the recreation area, it shows another lot with the building, and it shows a third lot with the stormwater. So what I'm interested in knowing is whether or not that needs to be three lots, is this something that the applicant owner wants, or I know that the location of the town road as it's proposed kind of creates those three lots de facto, however, if you would apply land hooks and consider it one tax parcel and one parcel by deed, I think that's important to the extent that it's an overall plan where the building that's on the back side still has the ability to use the recreation that's on the property on the front side, and obviously, stormwater relies, you know, on both parcels is the reason why the stormwater's in place, so, you know, just a question.
Yeah, I think if we land hook it together, I mean, it's functioning as one, right? So let's try to keep it as one, I think it was just how the roads kind of naturally separated it, is why there's three, but I think the entire intention was to have that as one, because it is one development plan.
Okay, just think about that, I mean, I could think of reasons why somebody might want it to be separate too, but if it was separate, then I think there needs to be pretty good legal documents allowing for these people to use property on that side of the road and...
Sharing utilities.
Sharing of utilities, costs for maintenance of plantings, landscaping, stormwater, whatever it ends up being, so, you know, it makes it a little bit more difficult on that side if you have different lots, and then you have to meet bulk requirements for each lot individually as well, and then we're kind of creating a parcel that's really not buildable with the stormwater pond on it as well, so, and that's kind of something that I would frown on, so if you can think about that and let us know how you're going to approach that, that would be good, but...
And just so you know, Brian, Joe, I ran into Tony, and he asked me whether there was a town road going through it, and I initially misinformed him, I sent him an email to correct that, basically that we're up in the air about that right now, the different lots and things, so it was clarified, and Dan sent him the information also.
Yeah, but it is a town road that's proposed, yeah, that's just to be clear, yeah.
Like any, any.
And I, yeah, that's the confusion I created with him, all right, but he's clear now. So is there anything more?
I mean, I think we hit the major items, I mean, we've got some technical items to work through as we progress, but, you know, I think we've all taken a pretty hard look at this one, and, you know, seeing that this is probably one of the first real projects where we're creating secondary access or secondary road in town center, you know, on the applicant's side, we'd love to hear some public comment, as we know, we have to advance the plans forward, but, you know, hopefully, we're at that point with the board where they're comfortable enough to open it up.
I personally think we're there for that purpose.
I'd like to make a motion to set this for public hearing, can we?
So procedurally, let me just, we've got to back up a little bit, there was a declare, you did declare intent to act as lead agency already, so those notifications were circulated to the interested and involved agencies. Dutchess County Water Wastewater Authority actually said we should have included the Dutchess County Legislature, because there might be a Dutchess County Legislature action in terms of drainage district formation or whatnot, or expansion of the district, so ALITA has already sent that out as well, there was no objection to, by any of the interested or involved agencies, to this board acting as lead agency, so the first item order of business for the board would be to declare itself lead agency.
I'll make a motion to declare, that we declare lead agency.
All right, Jason Evan Tantono, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no extensions and no negatives.
Okay, and, you know, I agree with Brian that they've, you know, really taken a good hard look at this site, and the improvements are, I think, really well done, so they've done a really good job of making sure that they've taken a lot of the things that you've already said into consideration, you know, it started back when Faye was talking about a lot more open space, and then, you know, some of this ended up being by necessity with when they ran the stormwater calculations and figured out what available water and sewer demands that they needed from Dutchess County Water Wastewater Authority, so, but the plan has really progressed to a point where, you know, I'm generally satisfied with the content, and they've hit on a lot of the points that are within our code, so I'm satisfied to suggest to the board that if you desire, you could open up a public hearing on this, it would be a public hearing on the subdivision, the site plan, and the special use permit.
Any comments?
Well, I just want to, I wouldn't like to make comment, I just want to commend the applicant on, you know, following our comments, adhering to our comments, we asked for a rendering, and it looks like you're dedicated to providing very nice architecturally beautiful building also, I'm very happy to see that you've done, you've sort of listened to what we've had to say, and you're doing a pretty detailed, comprehensive landscape plan, and, you know, I know you'll do a great job planting those plants, so I think it's a fantastic plan, I'm not going to get into commenting on individual types of plants, it's more of a stylistic thing that, you know, that's up to you guys, but I definitely think it achieves what we'd like it to achieve, which is to, you know, green up the space, make it look nice, buffer areas that need to be buffered, and I think it'll be a benefit to your development, it'll be attractive for your development, but important to the town, I think it'll be an attractive looking setting for our town center, so I just appreciate that, and commend you guys on the effort you're taking to, you know, work with the town on this, so I'm prepared to move forward with the public hearing.
Anyone else, any comments?
No, I think that the renderings are very well thought out, and I defer to our resident landscape architect who knows plantings. I think over the time that we've spent with this, it's developed into a very nice project that we can be proud of.
Absolutely, so with that...
I would like to offer a resolution to go to public hearing with respect, there were three things, a subdivision...
Site plan and special use permit.
Site plan and special use permit, and set that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the record on that, that's July 18th, 2024.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, nice job.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Turn that, this is the beginning of our town center.
It's the first one in a row.
Yes, I think it sets the tone.
The third item on the agenda for discussion is the Hickson apartment. Hi, Mr. Crane.
This is Joe from Wayland Architecture. So this property here is 29 Indian Pass in Stormville. Right now, the existing apartment is approximately 470 square feet. It consists of one bed, one bath, a small kitchen area, and a small living area. The apartment was built approximately in, I believe, 1996 by the previous owner of the house. Oh, before that? Oh, before 96. The current owner is looking to legalize it as an accessory apartment. So far, we have also submitted the plans to the building department, along with the application for C O. We also received a letter from Hudson Land Design with attached comments, and we will be addressing the following. 2A, we will include the plans for the entire house to show the calculations of the livable floor space. 3A, we will provide a plan that shows total number of bedrooms for the entire house. We will show, 3B, we will show the four required parking spaces in the driveway on the site plan. 3C, item number one, we will add a note stating the letter of consent to permit and periodic inspections by the town as required. 3C, item number two, we will add a note on the plan stating that the special use permit is valid for three years. 3D, we will add a note to the plan stating that any violations will be satisfied prior to the issuance of the C O. Number four, we will provide a bulk regulation and lot performance table to the site plan. Number five, we will provide the zoning district designation on the map and provide setback lines and dimensions as well. Number six, we will note the parcels located in the Aquifer overlay district and attach the written response to the site plan. Number seven, we will have the owner provide proof of ownership. Number eight, we will show the parcels along with the names and addresses of the property owners within 500 square feet of the site plan. Number nine, we will provide the planning board blocks to the plans, all of the plans. Number 10, we will provide the owner's consent block to each plan. Number 11, we will remove the requested information from sheets two and three. And number 12A, we will add the note to the plan stating that the dryer vent is to be cleaned twice annually.
Suggested, suggested by the fire advisory board.
Yes, yep, I believe that was all of the comments from Hudson Land Design.
Dan, you want to make any comments?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, the first item was that the, and I believe Craig has also verified this, but per 617.5C 11 of the environmental conservation law, this would be normally deemed a type two action, so the planning board has the ability to deem the action type two by resolution, and then that would end the secret process at this point for them on this. And I had mentioned in there about the possibility of setting a public hearing date, obviously... Obviously, there's going to be three public hearings in July as of now with the, because the Boyd subdivision will be on, Pazudo will be back on again, and then Dutchess Contracting will be on because that was just approved to go to public hearing. So the bigger part of that comment was just some, a lot of this is just, you know, cleanup for the plan and just adding some notes.
Right.
Relatively easy to do. I think the hardest one is making sure that we have a good feel on the adequacy of the water supply and septic system that's out there.
Okay.
So that's engineers certification or some sort of test to the adequacy. So we'll need, we'll need that. I don't know if that's underway yet or if that was relatively new to you based on the comment in the letter, but that has to be done. It's an important part to understand what was the septic that was there before the apartment? Was it based on, you know, was the house a four-bedroom that was there before and a bedroom was removed to put the apartment? Now there's still four bedrooms with the apartment or, you know, and then, so whatever information might be able to get found from the health department. But more importantly, normally an engineer can write something up to the extent that, you know, the septic system is adequate for what's proposed.
Okay.
So if you feel like you would be able to get that, it would be helpful to have that by the time the planning board has a public hearing.
Okay.
We've had a number of public hearings that just continue on because there's some missing information.
Yep.
And obviously, that's kind of a big piece for this to make sure that can actually work.
Okay. And I believe the next, the deadline for the next one is July 3rd?
It would be, I believe, July 1st. Sounds familiar to me.
Actually, yeah, I think it was July 1st.
Yeah, July 1st is 17 days prior.
Okay.
Now, it would be, it would be appropriate if that was provided by then. I mean, you can, you can provide answers to a majority of these by then for sure.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned. The tougher one might be the engineer cert, so.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll try and get that underway and see, you know, if it happens that we get it and are able to submit by the 1st, then we'll do that. If not, then, you know, we'll have to wait until August.
Yeah, and even, even up until the point where there's the meeting, because we don't normally like for the special use permit for accessory apartment, applications to drag on too long.
Right.
So, because, you know, we want to encourage people to come in and do the right thing here at the town because there are a number of them that we're tracking down.
Yeah.
But so this applicant here trying to do the right thing, and so we just want to make sure that we can get as much of that information as we can.
So the other half of it is that when the cards go out, the public shows up.
Right.
Yeah.
And if his comments aren't satisfying, so he needs time to review everything you submit. And if you don't mind, August sounds like a better
Okay.
time. Am I speaking out of turn here, the board?
No, I think in the past we've
Yeah.
had, have to adjourn because the information wasn't available and it seems pretty tight to get everything done. I don't know.
Would you agree that August would be better for you?
I mean, we can definitely, you know, look at everything and look at the big picture and we can see, I don't know.
Because here, let me be more specific. We have to vote to schedule the public hearing. So rather than vote tonight, we can vote next month for the public hearing in August under the assumption that you've submitted everything and he's had time to review it and there aren't any issues. You know, so you still have the, you know, rather than us vote tonight, you get everything done and then we can vote for the public hearing in July.
Okay.
Which then would place it in August.
Yeah, I think that that should work out. Give the engineer some time to do whatever he needs to do.
Yeah, I think your linchpin is the engineer at this point, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and I would agree with that and it's, you know, everybody's busy right now, obviously, as you know, so I could, I don't know if you have anybody lined up. That's why I was kind of mentioning that because if you had somebody lined up, you know, then
Yeah.
But the other, the other thing that could be considered is if the majority of this is all satisfied for the July submittal
Yeah.
then the board could also authorize us to prepare a draft resolution of approval in consideration of the fact that, you know, hopefully a lot of people come out with public comment and
Okay.
throw some monkey wrench in there.
Yeah.
So, you know, that way, just to help try to streamline the process, we can do it so that the public hearing can be closed and they could actually consider the application.
Okay.
And so since a lot of this is just housekeeping stuff
Yeah.
you know, the comment letter is going to get much shorter if you just address them.
So Okay.
The big one will be the adequacy of the sewage and the water supply.
Okay.
So in effect, there'll be no delay, assuming
Right, right, right.
that happens.
Yeah.
Just more prepared for the public hearing.
Okay.
And, yeah. Any comments from the board?
So the board could determine this or classify this as a type 2 action tonight and end the secret process if they'd like, at least to get that process under.
I'll make a motion for the board to classify this as a type 2 action.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Okay, last item for discussion, jet management, site plan, and special use permit.
I'm William Basharat from the Rayx Group, representing the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Trainors. I didn't realize there's no aisle to put the board on, but I think that will be sufficient.
That's fine.
We have it ready for us.
Exactly, you know, and I can see my eyes, it's the only thing that still works, to be honest.
Do you need, do you need a copy?
No, no, I have a copy.
You have one.
I can see that very clearly.
Sure.
Okay. The, this project is really a simple project because there's no construction proposed to the site to alter it to fit the proposed use for it. As it exists, the building, it's one floor, the spaces are already divided on the inside. The work has been done, actually. The outside of the building is, as I'm sure you're either familiar with it or you've been to the site and you see it, has been well maintained. Mr. Trainor, when he bought the building a while back, the place was a junkyard, basically. There was a lot of debris in there. They got it cleaned up. The lawn was like six foot tall. You walk in there, your feet, a cheetah's going to jump on you. You know, he went, they cut it, they cleaned it up, and they maintained the lawn. Lawn really looks really good. So the building is maintained and they haven't tried to rent it as offices for quite a while. It was listed with Century 21 for almost a year they're trying and they could not. The only tenant they got was a viceroy club and they did not want to deal with that. You know, Jimmy and Lisa are residents of this town for a very, very long time. They care about the building. We have submitted to you the site plan and Dan came back with comments, which we don't see any problem with any of them, actually. The majority of them are extremely minor, although it looks like a big list, but it's minor items that we can completely address and comply with the code requirements on it. The building as it exists would propose the three apartments to be used in the, as the building to become, complies with New York State Building Code completely. One of the units is existing legally existent there. It was always there and that was not modified. The front was to be used as offices and like I said, it was listed for over a year and they could not rent it. Right now, it's becoming a burden to hold onto the building and maintain it and take care of it without any income out of it. So the best solution for it is to get the special use and turn it to rental apartment units, which is, I think the town does need something like this. There's always a demand for somebody, that single person, what have you, that needs a small apartment that's affordable. And that's where we are. Like I said, the comments that came from Dan are completely addressable and we have no issue with that.
Thank you. Yeah. I had some time to spend at the fire advisory board meeting and we reviewed this and took a good look when I drove by and from Google Earth and all that kind of good stuff. We have a lot going on in that area now, right? Dollar General has completed their, their building, their project. And Joe Sala has beautiful renderings for the, the buildings that'll be going, going up off of Bishoff Lane. And I was wondering whether or not you intend to do anything about the facade?
Okay.
Front, sides, around, you know?
Right now, currently, the money is very tight, but we would love in the future, once the building become, you know, liquid and there's some income out of it and you can get financing, showing the bank that, hey, listen, we have an income, we would love to put a, we would love to put a second floor and renovate the entire building. And that will be a future, you know, project we'll be coming back to you with to comply with all the requirements of the town and the county regarding health, what have you. Are we, we would like to renovate the building and put a second floor and change the complete facade and make it compatible with the next door. I mean, they did a great job with the dollar store next to it. The problem is money are very tight right now. I mean, the main reason why they decided to go this route and they were hoping that the place would be rented, put like a retail store or an offices, what have you, and it didn't work and he has been paying the taxes and the maintenance and the mortgage on it for quite a while and it's becoming a burden. So once, like I said, the building is rented and there's a positive income from it, then you can go to the bank and say, listen, I would like a second, you know, mortgage or whatever, want to refinance and because I want to put a second floor, this building has this much income, this building has potential future income, and that will take place, we hope, in the near future. When, we can't really promise because again, you know, it all depends on the economy and the income.
One of the problems that we have here is that the board really doesn't consider the financial return or condition
We understand.
of an applicant. You know, the quality of the tenants are directly connected to the curb appeal in a lot of ways.
I just, the building, the boundary service
Okay.
The old, I had that for 25 years. When I took that over, it was, it was a build repair.
Right.
Same with this one.
Right.
I never met the previous owner before, but it was a lot of, you know, the life. So what I can say is that, you know, I know it's a mixed use, right? The building, it's, um...
That's what you're proposing, right? Mixed use?
No, no, what is now we're proposing
It's mixed use now.
It's mixed use now.
It's mixed use now, yes.
And you're going to go totally commercial?
Residential, residential. We cannot rent this commercial. We would love to rent this residential, but we tried for a year now.
I think the point that our chairman is making is, as Mr. Sala did and Dollar General, I think you could say that the Dollar General is probably the nicest one you've seen. And what we do now sets the tone for our town center.
Correct.
And aesthetics is very important and we do have aesthetic review on any, any project within the town center.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand, I'm in business, I know, I have commercial property myself and it's a lot to handle.
Correct.
But I think if you could look at a possibility of addressing the appearance, I think that's really what we're looking for.
I, I
Please, you can, you can comment, but you have to come up.
If I may, ma'am? No, you need to approach the, I apologize because it's being, it's being recorded. Oh, I'm sorry. So the building was, I'm sure you've all interviewed
Yeah, we know.
And that building was that gross red brick and it had different colored doors and so we are continuing, that's our conversation all the time is how we're beautifying that property. And we will continue to do so.
Right.
Like I said, we're in complete agreement of that. We, we want to do that. We will absolutely, we always put into our properties, like the money, so we'll, we'll do that, like Mr. Basharat said, timeline, I mean, we're going to do that, we're not going anywhere.
One of the things that I can do is come up with a design for the building for the future, not for the immediate work, and show the board how we would envision this building to become. Definitely, we would love to go a second floor on it and make it more appealing and compatible with the building next door. It's definitely will be a lot more valuable building, a lot more, you know, appealing to any tenants to go in, but at this stage, there is no funds
Money available.
But we will be more than happy to design something for what we envision the building is going to look like in the future and so give it to the board and then, you know, work with the aesthetic committee and that's something it's, I would actually would like to do.
So I had a thought at the fire advisory board meeting when I was looking it over and I confabulated my, my plans. I looked at the exterior and the signs on the, the sign and the different businesses that were in there. Now, is that building currently insulated at all?
Yes, it's insulated. The building is mostly masonry walls, so from a fire point of view, it's very safe. The building is structurally completely safe and built really very well. Okay, they fed the walls on the inside and they put insulation and sheet rocked it, what have you.
I didn't know.
So the building, the building is very well insulated
I see.
and airtight. The, like I said, from a structural point of view, can accommodate a second floor in a heartbeat. There's no problem.
Well, I was hoping it wasn't insulated because my idea was that, you know, a stow product on the outside, you know, would accomplish both missions, what, what, you know, we, we wanted in the way of aesthetics
Yeah.
and curb appeal. And considering that you're going from commercial to residential, it would, it would up the R value.
We'll doodle with it a little bit as is, as I come up with
We'll be posting it.
What we have planned. Yeah, yeah. We, you seem like honorable people, you know, so there's no question in that, but the, the issue is, you know, there's a sidewalk to nowhere right now at, at the Dollar General and as a board, we, you know, we're here for the safety, welfare, and
We probably can do, can do the sidewalk extended a little bit, little by little, before you know it, we'll have all the buildings, hopefully, that they'll be in front of you.
Here we are talking, we, you know.
We, we have no problem with extending the sidewalk in front of the building.
I think, I think what we're trying to say is, show us something that you can do for a reasonable cost
Uh-huh.
to, to have that building have more street.
That sounds fair.
Yeah.
My plans were exactly that. I'm a contractor.
Yeah.
I'm a stow. But that's not, you know, we were thinking about that also, maybe a false facade or second floor, that's, you know, that's not a problem.
So the false facade would allow you then
Because another building looks short to me. It looks short like when you drive up to it, it looks a little low.
It does.
If you look at Dollar General, those are all false peaks, right? So my thinking, you know, having heard now that your plan is to put a second floor on it eventually, I'm sure a design can be made where you're not wasting funds
Exactly.
improving the exterior, but at the same time, allowing yourself to add a second story without destroying what you've already invested in. So I, I personally need to see something, you know, that addresses
We'll, we'll address that. You know, one of the comments was they, you want to see the front elevation of the building. We'll do the existing condition and we'll do a proposed condition what we think will work where there's going to be a reasonable cost to, to, to accomplish now.
Okay. Any other comments from any other board members about? Okay. Any other comments from any other board members about this?
I, I go by today and I realize it's not an environmental issue, but it's a very unattractive area, sitting right next to a new building. And, you know, we listen to promises and promises never happen. But, you know, it seems to me that you should be doing something to make that look somewhat better.
We will.
It's gonna be an intervention.
Yeah, it's like you're gonna get such, you're already, you know.
Oh, yeah.
It was really a disaster.
No question, you fixed it.
As a matter of fact, the bank was so concerned, yeah. The bank was very concerned about it and they required an environmental study. And that was done and it's completely cleaned. There's absolutely no environmental issues whatsoever on that.
Let's talk to the board and decide.
Yeah. We, we will, we will come up with some kind of an aesthetic suggestion, you know, we'll, we'll make it like really where it's feasible to do, let's put it that way, without breaking the bank.
If you need, if you need help applying STUCO, my ancestors have taught me how to do it very well. You can come to my house, I'll show you some masonry that you haven't seen anywhere.
My grandfather was a flasher, he did all the STUCO.
My father was a tiny mason.
My dad was a mason.
Okay.
So it's, it's, you know, we will, we'll come up with something. We really work with the board. We appreciate you taking the time to consider this. And I don't know where we go from here, but I think we could come back the next meeting and hopefully we address most of the comments that Dan asked for. I don't see much of an issue with them. And by the way, I appreciate you giving us the code number on each comment. I mean, that's a great thing.
I do that, but a lot of times people still don't look at it. And really, the intent of me doing that is so that you look at the code and see what it's required.
I was telling them, I said, that was the greatest thing I've ever seen in 18 years. You know, sometimes you're buried in the code book trying to find it, you know, when you give me the code number, right, we're right to it. We will address, as a matter of fact, I have addressed already a few of them quickly, like we put the setbacks. We located the wetlands, we went to the GIS maps and we got the wetland located on that. There are, there's wetlands off premises, but we are within the property, within the wetland buffer, what have you. And there's quite a few items that you asked for.
I looked at the wetlands and it's not, it's not very typical of your board.
You got it, exactly.
And you're, you're well within 100 feet of.
Yeah, this is, this is where the wetland is located.
No, it's a state wetland, which is why I brought it up, because the state wetland...
There's no, no wetland.
No.
Well, the, the state wetland carries 100-foot adjacent area. State, it's a state wetland. So all I wanted was to be shown on there generally, because they're not really doing any work within that area.
No.
But it brings attention to it so that either the future board can look at that plan that was approved and say, oh, yeah, there is a state wetland here. Now they're looking to do something back there. Now they have to get the DEC involved to do it. It's really more of just a recognition and of it as a, as a fact that there's regulatory...
For now, we're not within that 200 feet.
Right, the septic actually looks like it is, but they're not constructing anything new in the septic, so.
Yeah.
Just to keep in mind that, I think, we've waited 20 years for this town center to start developing. And we're gonna make every effort to protect your investment, because adjoining property is gonna be held to the same standards as long as we're staying here. And I think it's important because you can rest assured, go ahead.
It's very important. And it's really understandable, because we discussed this. And like I said, Jimmy and Lisa are, you know, residents of this town for a very, very long time. They didn't come up here last year. And they're really concerned. And like I said, there was a tenant that came and they said, no, not in our town, we do not want it in there. And they turned them away. That's the only people that came looking for that, to rent the place. And they've just felt uncomfortable with it.
Yeah.
Jump program, wanting to rent, you know, park the trucks and all that stuff in the back. They didn't, they didn't want that either.
You know what I mean? So it's like they're being picky about it. Like I said, they, eventually, the end of the apartments, one of the, one of their kids probably will be occupying it, you know, and he's not an absentee owner. He lives not far from here.
That means no rent.
I just, you know, I think there's a, there's a really big misunderstanding about what we do here. And we're really not deciding, you know, what, just so you know, we don't, we don't decide what businesses come and go and what, what, you know. It's the zoning and what the applicant is proposing that we consider. Yes, so.
And, yeah, you know, the point I was trying to explain is that, you know, they are just as concerned as you are. And they're appreciative of you trying to beautify the town. They're not going anywhere in this town. You know, and that's the whole, the whole idea behind it. And again, you know, the more beautifying the neighborhood, the more the building will be more valuable. And that's a gain to them also.
To that, to that point, you may be able to accomplish some of the curb appeal with some trees or some sort of like, you know, because I think Sala, Sala was one of the big things that he improved upon was that plan.
Right.
We have a proposal, like some buffers between, but there's already existing a thick line of trees. You know, we're trying to kind of, you know, beautify it. And little by little, the landscaping will take place. I mean, look at the lawn. I mean, that did not come up like that overnight. He's been working on it for two, three years, trying to make it grow and cuttable. And if you walk it and it is, it's not even vandalized. It's, it's well maintained. All right? So we'll talk at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think I should go through a few things if it's okay. I think the biggest curve ball getting thrown at you guys right now is the fact that during, you know, once I got into a thorough code review, the minimum livable space for each unit is 800 square foot.
Okay.
So I spoke with the building inspector and, and the process would be that since you don't have 800 square foot on the two proposed, the one in the back is existing, we consider that existing non-conforming. But the front two, neither of them meet the 800 square foot either. And so what the process would be is you'd have to go to the zoning board for an area variance for that. This is a, this is a type two action, so it's not a coordinated review, so you don't have to wait for seeker from us or anything. You can go to them right now as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, good.
And, and because that's, that's a big thing, you know, and if, because if you can't, if you can't secure that variance for the minimum livable space for a residential unit, then the project doesn't go anywhere.
Is the 800 square foot, is that a town code or?
It's in, it's in the...
I don't think it's a, it's not a state code.
No.
No, it's town code.
Okay, it's town code, okay.
So it's not discretionary to this board. This board cannot just say, no, they're not meeting it, but that's okay.
All right. You know, just want to make sure that I don't have to go to state for variance for that. That, that will be fine.
Yeah, so, you know, I, you know, come up with some compelling reasons on why. I mean, obviously, it's an existing building. And, you know, one of the things I had mentioned in my letter was about that issue. Then I did have that conversation with the, the building inspector and, and she, she did agree that that was an issue that had to be resolved through the issuance of area variance. The, the planning board could refer this to the zoning board with a referral, positive or negative, if you'd like. You don't have to send them with a referral at all. So I've just thrown that out there as an option for the board. That was the biggest one. And I think the board really touched on all the other things that, that I think are really important, particularly with regard to town center. You know, I did mention about the, the fact it's two, two-story or three-story is what's required. Obviously, it's not what's here, it's existing. So I talked about an appearance of a second floor or facade change, because it's also says that you can't have flat roofs in, in the town center. So, you know, anything you can do with that would be helpful. Floodlights that are on top of the building right now, super not compliant.
We, we'll, we'll address that.
Yeah, and, and what's gonna happen is because this is a, an application that's within 500 feet of a state road, we have to send it out to county planning as well.
Yeah.
And so as a result, county planning, the two things they're gonna care about are lighting and landscaping guaranteed. And if they have an issue with that, then this board would only be able to not listen to what they have to say with super majority vote and everything else. And I think you've kind of gotten the flavor from them, the landscaping and lighting is important to them as well. So that would be important. And then, as mentioned earlier, the, you know, the sidewalk, this is the opportunity to, to move the sidewalk and continue that forward. So.
And in the past, we have offered the option where the applicant could, could delay the installation of the sidewalk or put it in immediately. In this situation, because right next door, there is a sidewalk, we wouldn't give you that option. We would want it as part of, I don't want to speak for the board, you know, but I just made that assumption.
I think, I think the assumption would be people might even walk to the store.
Right, right. Yeah. And it becomes a safety issue as well.
Like I said, you know, I've seen the comments and Dan, what he was going through, anything else that he wanted to?
No, and, and so, for me, the critical path method, you know, for you is the ZBA issue.
I don't see it to be a major, especially if we can go simultaneously, as I'm here, I can go to the planning, to the zoning board, because, and I think I'm gonna try the zoning board immediately and see where we're gonna go with it. I think we do have hardship. It's a pre-existing, we're not creating the space. And we do have the hardship that we discussed and you said, you know, it's not concerned. We definitely have the hardship, so I do feel comfortable about the zoning board. The issue now, it is the time and now, as long as we can go, because often you have to satisfy the planning board, get denied the planning board, then go to the zoning board, then come back again. As long as I don't have to go through that, which is gonna drag me to six months, I can immediately start the paperwork as early as tomorrow with the zoning board and go in front of them and see. Because if the zoning board turns us down, which is, I really, like I said, I feel positive about it, that they should, they should be okay with it, because we, from past experience, we do have the hardship for it.
Yes.
And we're not creating a hardship on anybody else, so that will be a discussion with them. If for a reason or another we got turned down, then I guess we dead in our track and we say, see, we, we have to go and try, hopefully rent it as a commercial space. I mean, that's still another option for us, because as is, the building has a certificate of occupancy on it and it could be rented in that direction. And if, if at one point it's gonna become not feasible, not, you know, the zoning board is gonna throw a curve ball or the state or what have you gonna come in, then we'll take it from there. All right?
So just to be clear, to satisfy this board based on what we talked about tonight, before a public hearing is scheduled.
Yeah.
We would need to see elevations with improvements, right? And within the limits of your, you know, your, your financial ability, we're not gonna be oppressive. And landscaping improvements as well, as well as the engineer's comments all being satisfied.
Okay.
Before, before that takes place, meaning the scheduling of a public hearing, because the public will be here and we need all of that to present, so that they can, they can comment accordingly.
Would it be helpful if we referred them to the zoning? It doesn't matter.
I mean, I don't see any problem.
It certainly doesn't hurt if, if you wanted to refer it to them with any kind of a positive referral. Again, sometimes I've seen the negative referral too.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this applicant to the zoning board with a positive recommendation.
We would appreciate that. That will be definitely helpful for us. And like I said, you know, the items that you, that you asked for, I don't see a problem with them. And we can address them and we can come up with, and we'll do with a facade that the board will feel comfortable with. And also, the owner will feel comfortable financially.
I haven't gotten a chance to ask any questions. I have a question for the town engineer. Are you, I see, and by the way, just to comment, I, I appreciate, I know it's tough, commercial space to rent, commercial space these days. That's a tough business to be in. And so I get you want to make it residential, that's fine. We do need residential, we need affordable housing in the town.
Sure.
Question for the town engineer. I, I realize you're using this existing paved space that's existing. Can you show the site plan on the screen?
Yeah.
That's all existing, yes, for space. You're just planning on striping it. So you're lining, you're putting spaces on, all the way on one end and all the way on the other end. Do you, Dan, do you feel like there's any, do you have any issues with vehicular circulation with that kind of design? Or is there any concern?
It's not perfect. You know, I, I agree. I mean, to be able to come off, right off of the, the throat of the entrance to the state road and having to turn quickly into the spots on the right, isn't, isn't a perfectly comfortable movement. And then the other ones, of course, are kind of, you're just going through this vast area of pavement that's not really serving much of enough additional purpose, other than just being there. But I think that they were just trying to work with what they had already. And so, you know, I, the, the planning board can certainly, you know...
Is there sufficient parking for three units there?
Yeah, the, per our code, there is.
What I would worry about is visitors parking in the middle and causing conflicts with someone trying to park on the end.
The, the units, as they proposed, they're really designated as a single person. They're small units, one bedroom. It's not intended for family and children where you have two bedrooms or potential three bedrooms, what have you. So the, the, the kind of guests and visitors that they're gonna be coming on the scene, I don't see any situation where it will become hazardous with the parking lot at all. You know, it's really, and then the board member can probably back me up on it. The parking lot as is, you know, it is, there's a lot of wasted space, but the way they had it before, they probably had cars stacked all over the place. And we just organize it to make it a little bit more...
I, I can see the efficiency in how you're doing it. You're not making any land disturbance, you're not cutting pavement. You're, it's probably the most economically efficient way of doing it. But I just, as, I know this is a discussion, you're bringing this before, it's for a discussion. So I just ask the question, is it, is it vehicularily efficient for vehicles? Is it safe? I mean, one thing you can do is the parking spaces that are on the end, you can move them closer and that would maybe more prevent, you know, but I don't...
I kind of feel that the, having them far away from each other gives a very comfortable space for cars to make a U-turn on the inside and go out headfirst onto, onto Route 55. You know, tightening the parking lot where somebody might be backing up and there's a car and or pickup truck or something could be, I think having the parking lot so comfortably, you know, the parking space is so comfortably far apart from one another makes it a lot easier for them to get in and out.
I remember upsetting a good position.
It's, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't impose anything at this point. I get what you're trying to do. But as you talk about the future, that's something that...
Yeah, if, if, if any development in the future, we have to come back over here and have a completely, completely new site plan.
Yeah. You know, maybe an island in the middle and one way going around the island. There's lots of different things you can do.
Yeah, well...
Having pavement up against that much pavement on Route 55 is a bit unattractive.
It's existing and we're not creating that.
I'm just talking about the future, sir.
Yeah.
The future, we'll be back here, definitely.
He, he brought up a point that I, I was thinking about at the Fire Advisory Board meeting. It, it's also that it's in disrepair. The, it, it's just old and cracking, right? So what I was thinking, you know, as a possible alternative to, you know, ripping it up and putting down new, is you could consider oil and chip.
Oil and chip?
Oil and chip to resurface the parking lot.
Are you talking about like Millings type deal?
Well, Millings is something that we talked about in the past. And when that's in disrepair, it's pretty unsightly. And, and our code also requires, if my memory serves me correctly, that it be bordered, it be bordered, you know...
We'll eventually maintain the correct... Paving that, that parking lot. That parking lot's not gonna remain like that. We will be paving it.
Oh, it will be repaved completely?
We will be paving it.
Yeah, I think the town center code requires paved for parking.
Okay.
We, we, we can, we will pave it and make it...
On the left side, there is a little more room towards, I know it's towards the well, but there is, more towards the building, there is more room to put, you know, the tenant entrance is on the left side of the building, on the back line. So that tenant can have his two parking spaces on that side.
That's again, it would be creating more impervious areas and my dad's gonna open up a can of worms when it comes to the stormwater management or what have you. I would prefer living like that and just pave it. I think it will be safe. There is not heavy traffic here. This is, we're talking about three residential unit. I'm sure Dan will back me up on that.
Yeah, that's not a lot of, not a lot of...
The impacted traffic impact is gonna be beyond minimum.
Very good.
All right?
And just so the, you know, the code requirement is two parking spaces per residential and then one visitor space per two units. So counts to seven and a half, so that's how they came up with eight.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
I'm not gonna superimpose beyond what, what I'm talking about vehicular safety. I'm gonna go with the town engineer.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to ask the questions, but I do have concerns about aesthetics and that goes along with everything we were talking about tonight.
All right, thank you very much and hopefully we appreciate the recommendation to the zoning board.
We have a motion on the floor.
You do have a motion on the table, so.
Do I have a second?
We need a second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I did not hear the motion, by the way.
Oh, the motion was a favorable referral to the zoning board.
Yes, we appreciate that.
You have to give us a chance to give a motion to be in favor of you. You have to let us do that.
I didn't hear it.
And you can do type 2 tonight if you'd like also.
You've got a guy here, free STUCO application, right?
I'm going to take you up on that.
Oh, no, I thought you understood that. I wasn't, yeah. It helps me relax.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to deem the action type 2 this evening or?
And do we want to deem, we can also vote to deem the type 2.
Type 2. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Type 2.
Type 2 seeker.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sure.
We'll be talking to you soon.
Things aren't easy these days.
But you know, I mean, as I said, what we do for you, the next project is going to equal what you're doing.
Yeah.
And I think that's important.
It is.
You're making an investment and you want the neighborhood to reflect what you've done. It's been horrible for a long time.
And it took a lot of elbow grease between him and the sign.
I bet.
They did a lot of physical labor in there.
We have to log home right down the road.
I think the timing is good.
Northern log homes.
You bought it at the right time. Things are happening and I think it'll appreciate. It'll be beautiful. No, no.
No, that's what we're looking for.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
Would you like to make a motion to close the meeting?
Before we do that, we didn't approve the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes for May 2024?
Still moved. Oh, he got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a quick, everybody, okay, was that done? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just a quick discussion about the whole Boyd wetlands.
Yes, right.
I don't know if we need to have a discussion here. I just, I wasn't sure exactly of the process.
So, all right, you want me to help with that or you want to explain it further?
So during the May meeting, the board discussed the option of having a wetland consultant of its own to assist with the review of the Boyd subdivision application. So we went ahead and contacted a local wetland scientist and they provided us with, you know, some of their fees. And then I asked them to kind of translate that into an approximate amount of what they thought it might be because our town attorney suggested that we know about how much that was to set up an escrow for it. So I just, I didn't know if everybody had had a chance to look at the resume of that company. Or is that what the board, is that the direction the board still wants to go?
Has the applicant been informed of the cost?
No, the overall estimated cost just came through today, so.
I mean, does he have to approve going forward?
Well, it's his, it's his application and the board has the ability, per code, to hire the consultants it needs to in order to review applications, particularly when it comes to something that's specific like the wetlands in this case, where there's diversion and there's a number of standards that have to be met.
Does he have enough money in escrow to cover this?
The escrow for a two-lot subdivision is probably $2,000 usually, so, you know. And that gets replenished periodically as Craig's bills and my bills come in.
I guess my point is if the applicant decides it's not worth the investment, is that his choice to say?
He can certainly pull his application.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
And technically, he's got a, you know, a single lot there. It's his ask that they're asking for a second building. That's their request.
I see what you're saying.
And there were also issues with having it correctly surveyed and indicated on the plan by the professional.
Changed my mind about that. There's no circumstance that's changed that's, it's still confidence in the existing wetland delineation. But, you know, the applicant may want to, I don't know. Maybe they're going to change the course of the direction in which they want to do the subdivision if they know that there's this big bill that's going to have to be charged to do that one delineation. If there's an alternate option for him that doesn't, like, I don't know, reducing it to a single, staying with a single lot, he would not be required to do that, then he may, we should leave that opportunity open for him to make that decision. You know, before we spend the money.
What if, what if Alitha was to reach out to the applicant to explain to them what the estimated escrow was from the consultant that we found? And the board is interested in going that route, but we're going to let you know that that's the route that the board was going to go in and you make the decision if you want to continue the process.
Right, I think that's.
And if they do, then we'll tell the consultant, start getting on it because there's a meeting in a month.
I agree. I think the call isn't a conversation. It's more of a notification.
Yeah, I think it's a.
We're proceeding forward if we wanted to let you know in case you want to make a decision on what you want to, whether you want to continue with the application.
I think it's an appropriate thought process.
I don't want.
And an opportunity for them to tell.
This is where we are.
Pleasant Ridge Road.
Pleasant Ridge Road on the left.
The two lot on the left.
Real steep.
Yeah, okay. Was that the Glastonbury?
Yeah.
Okay. No, sir.
Yeah.
Next.
So the next thing, Dan, and I'll leave it up to you, whether you want to, any housekeeping in and around pots?
Around what? I'm sorry.
Potter?
Oh, that.
Nothing for this conversation now at all? Okay.
No need to discuss that.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, so there was a motion. Jason had a motion on the floor to close.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.